Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware of the fire exits which are to the left of this room. In the event of an emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs and do not use the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record in minutes. So if you do speak tonight, please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items on the agenda. Extra copies are near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or the representative shall come to the podium, identify themselves, give their address, and then present their case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If the case is a public hearing, it will be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding the application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the board. We ask you to limit your discussions to five minutes. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to the public input and the board will then move on to a decision. No further input is allowed at that point. With that, Mr. Richards, do you make a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we pick up from the table PB 2021-082. Place that to the top of the agenda and follow the agenda in the items as listed after that.
All those in favor, please say... Oh, I'm sorry, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, there's nobody absent, nobody abstains. Please call the first case, Michelle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on the agenda is case number PB 2021-082. Upon the matter of request by Nixon Peabody, acting as agent for Bell Atlantic Mobile Systems LLC, Verizon Wireless, for preliminary and final site plan approval for the installation of a small cell wireless telecommunications unit attached to a newly placed utility pole located in the town's right-of-way in front of 220 Lafayette Road in an R1 residential district.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Robert Bergdorf, Law from Nixon Peabody, here tonight on behalf of Verizon Wireless. For the record, also with me tonight, to the extent the board has questions that they can answer, is Chris Boyce, Verizon Wireless' real estate specialist for the site, and Mike Crosby, Verizon Wireless' RF engineer. It's a continuation of a hearing for site plan approval from the planning board. And I'm filling in for my partner, Jared Lusk, who is away. But I understand at previous meetings, what has already been presented is the need for the facility and how this pole on Lafayette Road fits the Honeycomb network and is highly location-sensitive and how it's part of the entire network and the build-out plan for Aronacoyt. And as a result of the public input at public hearings, it's also my understanding that this pole has been moved to the traffic island instead of the right-of-way on the side of the street. And procedurally, it's also my understanding that we're in a position for final approvals tonight and that all of the issues have been resolved, with the possible exception of whether it makes sense to landscape around this in a traffic island. And we are... Verizon's not in a position to landscape the utility pole on the right-of-way. We just... it's not in that business of landscaping. We don't have people who go out, who can maintain it, and they're going to die. And secondly, we're a public utility and the question is, are we being treated different than other public utilities with this request? Does the town require, for instance, RG&E to do this, or Spectrum, or others who have utility poles? And third, in a traffic island, given the distance from the pole to the curbing, there's going to be snowplow throw, salt, and these plantings will be dead before long. And we're just not in the business of getting out there and maintaining and doing landscaping. We do poles, we do communications equipment. What's interesting to me is that I think it was well-intentioned. But landscaping this just doesn't make sense. It's not going to hide the pole. And... but if obviously the town wanted to try that, that would be fine. But we just know it's not something that's going to ultimately be viable. My understanding is that there were some other issues with painting. Those were resolved and all of the other issues were resolved at the previous hearing. But again, I'm new to this hearing. So if there's any other issues that are out there that I've missed, obviously, we'd be happy to try to address those.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions. I think that this is a relative major shift, which was our request, but a relative major shift in the design. So I think it would behoove us to open the public hearing back up and just make sure that there's no additional public comment based on this revised design. I don't know what the other board members feel, but I would be happy to make that motion if the other board members felt that that was something.
Can you just clarify, so the revised design is from a normal in-line with the other poles to putting it in the middle?
Sure, so the original submitted, that we had the planning board hearing open on, the public hearing open on at our previous meeting, was for the pole line that would have been in line with just off the street on the kind of southeast side of Lafayette. And upon closing the public hearing and then hearing some of the public comment is when we asked the applicant to come in and provide this alternate layout, which they were so gracious to do. I think it's a major change as far as location and I think it's worthwhile to hear what the other residents, if any are here, have to say about it.
I know I for one am not opposed to anybody else from the board.
I would second it if it were a motion.
Yeah, I would make that motion.
So there's been a motion to open the public hearing, a second motion, just one. So with that, I would ask you to take a seat and I'm going to open the public hearing. If there's anybody who would like to speak to this case, please come to the podium. Oh, did I vote? Sorry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays, nobody absent, nobody abstained. So if anybody would like to speak to this, please come to the podium. State your name and address.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Ballantyne, B-A-L-E-N-T-I-N-E. I live at 154 Grand Avenue Road, across the street from the site. I was at the last meeting. And I just want to say thank you for your reconsideration and redesign of moving the pole out there. There are no other street poles in this neighborhood. So being able to put it out there just works much easier, especially for the property owner, because this would be a fourth item on her property that's in her right-of-way. So super appreciative. And then also, I'm on the board of our Party Hill Neighborhood Group. So we could also deal with a little bit of landscaping, like in the summertime, maybe make it look nice. Like, that's really not that big a deal. I can throw some seeds from my own yard and make it land by the pole and it could be fine. But we're really pleased to see that go there. Also, the way the snow throws in that area really doesn't smack up that high. So if it is centered within the island, the pole shouldn't really see significant damage, in my humble opinion.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak to this? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Please come back up. I do have a question, okay, well, go ahead and respond and I'll ask my question. Go ahead.
I actually appreciate the comments and that she appreciates that we moved it. So I have no objection to those comments.
Okay. Carrie, is there anything they should be aware of if they want to do that? For landscaping, they should talk to the town? Or they can just...
Yes, it is located in the town's right-of-way. So anything that happens typically would be requiring the Commissioner of Public Works approval, if not a 199 permit. I don't know if this would rise to the level of needing a permit per se, but certainly would need the town's authorization.
Okay, probably something the town would go for, it's an improvement.
I'm not going to speak on behalf of the Commissioner of Public Works.
I for one would hope that was the case. Any other questions or comments for the applicant? Looking around, I see none. Okay, with that, you can have a seat. I'd like to entertain... oh, did we do seeker on this?
It's a type 2.
Okay, so we did?
No, it's a type 2, so seeker is not required.
Okay, so type 2, unlisted?
It's just a type 2.
Just type 2?
Yeah.
So we don't need to vote, correct?
Correct.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, we'd like to discuss the two placement options.
Oh, you still have comments?
Well, I know that there's two options out there, putting it in the island or putting it on the... between the... in the tree lawn, I guess you'd call it, along the side of the road. I know that there was some resident comments that expressed desiring it to be in the traffic circle, I guess is what you call it. But there was also some discussion along the board members that it is more noticeable in the traffic island than it would be on the tree lawn. And I did not know if anybody's opinion had changed on placement. I for one have changed my opinion. I don't think it should be in the traffic circle. I think it should be in the tree lawn. I think it's less noticeable there. I, however, am one vote and just wanted to make sure that everybody else was on the same page. Well, on a different page.
Anybody else from the board?
I'm good to go ahead and make a motion on the application as presented.
Any other comments?
I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Huber, and it wouldn't be my first design choice either. However, I don't see a safety concern particularly from it. So if that's what the residents want, and clearly we didn't have anybody opposed, I'm inclined to accept it as is, is my thought.
Yeah. Okay. All right, with that, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. On PB 2021-082, that we approve the application as presented with the requirement that the land is put back into the same condition as it was found. And that's a condition.
Hold on one second. Do I have a second?
I would second that.
I'm sorry, was that a street? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstain, any absent? Seven ayes? Thank you. Give us a second, I guess we're going to change attorneys?
That's right.
Just so everybody understands, there was a conflict of interest there, so we're going to change attorneys. It was a pleasure, sir.
Thank you, seeing you too.
Welcome. Okay, with that, go back to the regular agenda items, Michelle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next case on the agenda is case number PB 2021-091. Upon the matter of request by Vital Signs, acting as agent for Ridge Portland Rochester LLC for signage approval to refurbish the existing pole on premises 1233 East Ridge Road in a C business district.
Is the applicant?
Well, this application was postponed per the applicant. But because it was a public hearing, it still has to be addressed as a public hearing, is what I'm told.
So we still have to open up the public hearing? That'll open up the public hearing. Anybody who would like to speak to this application, please come to the podium. Seeing none?
Can I make a motion that we keep the public hearing open and that we table this item 2021-091 until the... per the applicant's request, until the October meeting?
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Go ahead, Carrie. I'm sorry, Michelle.
Thank you, sorry, just catching up here. Next item on the agenda, case number PB 2021-092. Upon the matter of request by Aronacoyt Family Dentistry for signage approval to replace existing signage with new logo on premises 753 Titus Avenue in a mixed-use commercial district.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Aaron Park, proud owner of Aronacoyt Family Dentistry. Recently purchased the office in February of this year from Dr. Daniel M. Sweeney. And so I'm looking to replace the sign with the name Aronacoyt Family Dentistry and have my name underneath the sign as well, part of the sign. The new sign is going to be a little bit larger, about a foot and a half wider and about a foot taller. And the entire sign will be off the ground about two feet taller than the current sign. And it will be in relatively the same position as the current sign. It'll just come out towards the sidewalk about a foot and a half closer to the sidewalk.
Okay. Any questions for the doctor?
Can you just talk to us about lighting? Last month, or last week, I asked that the lighting be looked at to see if it can be so it's placed down as opposed to shooting up. And I understand that... I don't know where we're at with that, so I just want to ask where that is.
Okay, I have not considered pointing it at the angle downward. To be honest, the plan was to point it from the ground up. But I could consider that and look into that. My idea was in case I wanted to replace the sign in the future, then it wouldn't be part of the lighting, wouldn't be part of the sign. I could keep the current lighting if, you know, 10 years, 15 years down the road, I needed to replace the sign.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not stuck one way or another on it. I just thought maybe for snow, it would be better to have the light on top than the bottom.
Okay. And so then it would be part of the sign, it would come out from the side and come down.
It would look like what the buildings do on Titus Avenue with the sign on the property with the lights down on them. I don't know how you would do that, because I'm not an engineer, but...
Okay. Oh yeah, I can definitely consider that and talk it over with my lighting guy and look at pros and cons of each. If I go one way or the other, would I need to come back here and...
Not as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'm only one vote.
Okay, yeah, gotcha.
Any other questions? Anybody feel different about that?
I think it's nice to look into it. I do want to recognize it's probably more costly and more fuss. And we've approved a number of signs in that district with the ground-mounted lighting. So I don't... if it works out, that's great. But I don't want you to feel pressured to have to do that.
Okay.
The other thing that we've done, not only in that district, but in all districts, is that you'll be able to turn on the light one hour prior to opening of your business and then extinguish it two hours after the close of your business.
Okay.
All right.
And in the case of Aronacoyt Beer Company, it's, I think, like two properties over from mine to the east. They're hours or later, correct? I think they're open probably close to midnight, I would imagine, or maybe 10 or something like that. Would if we had our lights on during the same time that their lights were on? Would you be opposed to that?
The...
No.
My feeling is that we stay with the rule that we've created.
Okay.
It just remains consistent.
Okay.
Others in that area are following those rules too.
Okay, and then we'll do the same then.
Thank you.
No problem.
My only comment or question, I guess, is regarding the final location of that sign. And this is certainly not something that I'm super concerned about. My only, I guess, comment or question that I want to make sure we bring up is that the sidewalk is not a located item on the instrument survey that you provided us, because it's not on your property, right?
Yeah.
So your comment that the new sign would be a foot or a foot and a half closer to the sidewalk, we just, at the moment, unless you have some other information, can't prove that that keeps it on your property. And I just want to make sure we don't create a problem for you, that's all.
Gotcha, yeah, yeah. So in measurement-wise, it's 10 and a half feet from the sidewalk with the new sign. Currently, we're at 12 feet from the sidewalk, so a foot and a half over would be 10 and a half feet from the sidewalk. And I have a... it's crude, but I have a drawing of it, I could pass it out to...
Yeah, I think the problem... I would love to see it. I think the problem is that we may not know where your property line is in relation to that. So correlating that, I think, is sort of the...
Thank you.
The potential issue here.
Congratulations.
It's fine, we can share, we can share.
Okay, Brad?
Thanks.
I got two.
Carrie, is that something that the town would verify before?
We try not to be the one to verify that the location of a private boundary is up to the property owner. What we often would advise is contact the surveyor who would have prepared the plan to see if they... I don't know if it was a surveyor, an engineer. We can also look to see if we have any historic survey maps on file for the property that might show a measurement from the building versus a measurement from the sidewalk.
So I do see that the drawing that you provided says that it's approximately 20 foot 6 inches from the building to the first post, right? And then if we've got a, forgive me, what's the width?
The new width would be four and a half feet.
So call five feet, just for easy math, right?
Yeah, about five feet.
So then it should be under. I do think it would still be good to just have... I don't know if you've contacted the surveyor ever before that provided this drawing that you have or not.
I have not.
But I mean, a surveyor will come out and just put a stake on your property line. I just want to make sure we don't create a condition that causes you grief and a variance request down the road, that's all.
Okay.
So Spencer, on his drawing that is attached, he is showing the sign location on his property. Am I not reading that correctly?
Yeah. I just don't know where his property line is.
Oh, I have an older survey. I believe it was with our original packet.
Yeah, I have that, right?
Yeah.
I think that goes out, is it 30-some feet?
Can we just do the math? We know his property line is 35 feet from the front of his building. We can, I just... I want to make sure that math isn't wrong or that someone didn't miss a measurement, that's all. I'm just saying. I'm just... Did you... you went out and measured this? Okay. I'm confident enough in him going out and do... personally, I mean, I understand your concern, but he's got an instrument survey from January 6th of this year. And he went out and measured this on the ground, I'm comfortable with. And if down the road it's wrong, then he has to...
Then he has to move it.
I'm one person.
I'm kind of comfortable with it.
Okay.
Anybody else uncomfortable, comfortable?
No, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Now, I will just state into the record, Mr. Chair, that the light temperature is 2,700 Kelvin is what was reported to us and...
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, with that, we'll open it up for a public hearing, unless there's any more questions before...
Thank you.
Anybody who would like to speak to this, please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Anne Burns and I live at 199 Bellhurst Drive. I'm here this evening as co-chair of Helping Aronacoyt Plan for Progress, the hip group, as a community stakeholder group that's worked tirelessly for over 20 years on the renaissance and the economic improvement of the Titus Cooper Hudson neighborhood. We just want to say we applaud Dr. Park because having this dental business continue since the 50s, staying in the same location really makes this neighborhood come together. It helps with the cohesion in the neighborhood. And we really like the welcoming and distinctive graphic for the proposed sign. We did submit some comments, but you all have pretty much addressed a lot of them. You know, turning the lights off at night, we really appreciate that. The only other thought that we had was using an LED and potentially, if the downlighting works, then that's great. But just as another cost savings, LED instead of incandescent might be an option as well. But we're happy to welcome Dr. Park to the neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to address this matter? Please come to the podium. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. So is this another type 2?
Yes.
Okay. With that, I entertain a motion from the board? Or any other conversations, I'm sorry.
Do we want to hear what the applicant has to say about hip sign?
I'm sorry, would you like to please address?
I have nothing to say, I'm good. But LED is a great idea, you know, save money, I agree.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board? Or I'll entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead on PB 2021-092, that we approve the application as presented with the following condition, that the lights be ignited one hour prior to opening and extinguished two hours past closing, post-closing. And that the applicant, and this is a recommendation, not a condition, look at lighting the sign from the top light of the sign, top of the sign down as opposed to the bottom of the sign.
Are we not approving lighting as part of this? Like, I feel like if we say as presented, then we have approved uplighting.
Yeah, and I said I'm fine with the uplighting.
Yeah, me too, but it...
Yeah, I think we're approving it as a whole package, is what...
Right, but if Dr. Park were to put in downlighting, would he not be in contradiction to his approved plan? That's my question. I think he's following the recommendation. Okay, that's... I'm finally, I just want to make sure that he's... I understand what you're saying. I think the recommendation then...
Let me... let's check, is there any concern?
No, I think, I think you guys are...
Okay.
All saying the same thing, just in different ways.
Well, yeah, recommendation versus requirement, yeah.
I have a question. It's a wonder. I know that there was some discussion about lighting and the hours of the lighting. And the wonder that I had is, I'm trying to go back through the recents that we've approved. And I know that that is our rule, all over town, essentially. I'm trying to think specifically in this district of examples of a building that closes... I'm guessing here, maybe he closes at 5 o'clock or something like that. So two hours after that would be 6, 7 o'clock, which does seem a little early to me to turn off the light. And I'm thinking about other signs in that, in the muck with external lighting. And I know that there are other buildings that do close probably at or about 5 o'clock, but I don't know that any of them have lighting. And the one that jumps out to me, the brewery's a little different because they are consistent. But the church, I don't know what time that turns off. If it does turn off, it's pretty late. And that's my wonder, if... I agree that asking to turn the light off at 7 is a little early.
Let's ask the applicant, is that a concern of yours or...
Yeah, I would...
Please come back up.
Yeah, definitely, I would like to keep the light on later. 7 o'clock does seem early to me. But, you know, whatever you guys feel is correct, we can do. You know, if we could keep it on until 8, 8:30, that'd be great.
I got to tell you, I think for just covering ourselves, we need to be consistent with lighting, that we've made this rule, we've stuck by this rule all over town. If I'm going to start shifting on it now, why can't I shift on it for the next guy who wants it? If I'm going to start shifting on it now, why can't I shift on it for the next guy who wants it on twenty-four hours because it actually is a great advertisement? That's my real concern and
No, I.
if I don't shift on it for this time.
I completely understand. That's why I shot it out there as a wonder. I just wanted to make sure that we had talked about that and thought about that because I, I do, I do hear the applicant's concern. And then that's why I also tried to think of other examples in that neighborhood. The only one that I can think of offhand that doesn't really have hours or has like a five, you know, is the church, I know that that light is on.
I don't know what the application said or what we, if we put conditions on it, I'm hoping we did. Um, if we didn't, shame on us.
Can we ask the applicant, what are the hours of operation of the business?
Well, that would be like nine o'clock or something like that.
Yeah.
But I'm just trying to think, I like the, um, the, the, um, what is the Flanagan Mills Agency or the law firm are also in the muck? I don't know if they have lighting. And did we give them the same rules or are their lights on?
I don't believe that, in my time, that they've not been here, have they?
Certainly Flanagan Mills has.
We, yeah, we did it then.
We gave Reliant Federal Credit Union this rule and they close at five.
That's, that's fine. Thank you. Now I feel better.
But I just have, we need to be real consistent on the decisions we make here because if not, we are really.
No, I completely, you're right, you're right, Mr. Richard. I, I, I just wanted to make sure that we had thought about it and that we could find another example of someone who had a five o'clock and that, that, you know, the rule's the rule.
Thank you. You can have a seat again. So, Mr. Richard, do you want to repeat your motion?
Wish I could.
Do you like me to repeat it for you?
On PB two zero two one dash zero nine two, that we approve the application as presented with the following condition, that the lighting is ignited one hour before the opening and extinguished two hours post-closing. I would also put in there now that we, uh, have a consistency that the lighting is less than four thousand, um, Kelvin in temperature. And then finally, a recommendation that the applicant look at lighting the sign from on top as opposed to below.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay, no abstain, no absent. Thank you. Congratulations on the baby too. Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I missed two second of that.
Mr. Evelyn.
Thank you.
You're all set if you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Congrats.
Take a couple second break here for hell to return.
Sometimes they go like, kind of like on that side and we can see and they can see kind of, yeah. But, well, we have the copies up here too.
Folks at home will appreciate the fact that you let them see it. Yes, yeah, because we've got a copy and the camera, I think, can see it better.
Shall we please call the next case?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next case on the agenda is another, uh, or case number PB twenty twenty-one dash oh eight dash four. This is a table adjourned and public hearing left open item upon the matter of request by Sonburn Sales, Inc. for preliminary and final sleep plan approval to construct a four thousand two hundred and thirty-two plus or minus square foot Burn Dairy retail store in Delhi and fueling facility with a freestanding fuel canopy and fuel pumps on premises twenty-one eighty East Ridge Road on a, in a C business district.
Before you start, do we, do we have to take it off the table?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we remove PB two zero two one zero eight four from the table for consideration.
I'll second that. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay, no abstain, no absent. You can start. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Christian Bernal, Senior Executive Vice President with Burn Dairy. Uh, thanks for having me this evening. Uh, we were, Aaron was actually here last time. Uh, I had a conflict, but we were in front of this board a month ago with a site plan. Uh, it was a different layout of the site plan. It was, I believe, the third public hearing that, uh, we had been through of listening to the public's comments. After listening to their comments, it seemed that most other comments were involved with the fueling facility, the fuel canopy, the feeling of cars, lighting at the pumps, noise at the pumps, uh, and whatnot. So what I did is I went to my engineer, uh, we looked at several, several layouts. And in front of you tonight that I submitted last week and on this board here is the revised layout, uh, that we had come up with. I think it, uh, mitigates many of the concerns that the neighbors had. The curb cuts are still the same, so traffic is still going to be a concern, but I'm going to go over the revisions to the site plan and they are pretty drastic revisions from the last time I was here. The store square footage has stayed the same. The design of the store as everyone has in front of the information package is the same. That has not changed. The fuel canopy at the request of the planning board has changed. Uh, I remember you four, you guys went, a few of the members went over and looked at, uh, Maiden and Fester, the new Burn Dairy, and did not particularly like the design on the canopy. Uh, so therefore I handed out to board the other day at a workshop, the new design, uh, which is a parapet design. Okay, uh, and I will show it to everyone. It's very, very, very similar to the Quigley design that you guys approved on July. Uh, so I think the canopy were in good shape there. Uh, the colors of the canopy would match the building, which is an aged ivory with a brilliant white trim, evergreen roof. I do have samples I brought with me tonight if any of the public would want to see them, but there's a bag of samples there. In the bag as well, but, uh, so the canopy, again, same number of pumps we're at, four, four fueling dispensers, eight fueling positions. So what really changed here is the, the building. The building, we're using the building as a buffer between the fuel canopy and the residence to the north back here. Okay, before the canopy on the other was approximately ninety feet from the property line. This proposed canopy is a hundred and forty-seven feet away. Okay, so it's grown fifty-seven feet, uh, further to the south. The fuel tanks before were eighty-three feet from the residential property back here. This plan right here places the tanks a hundred and ninety-five feet away. Okay, the fuel tanks for fuel deliveries are right here in the plan, as you will see. That's pretty much as close to East Ridge as I possibly can. The canopy is as close to East Ridge, uh, as possible as well. Okay, being, you know, taking into consider the internal traffic flow and whatnot. This plan compared to other plan, this plan has thirty-eight percent green space. The other plan had thirty-four percent, uh, green space. This one, what we did, the other one just had a six-foot-high fence. And the fence, just to let everyone know, it's the same fence we're proposing, which is your information package, six-foot privacy wooden fence. Tightly knit together, because this fence is still there. Before, we just had one fence here. So what I've done to beef this up again, taking into concerns of the noise and the lighting, I have decided to move that fence. It was two feet off the property line. This fence is now fifteen feet off the property line, okay, the north property line. What I've also done is we are going to keep those remaining trees back there. You can see they are labeled trees, existing trees remain. There's some larger trees, uh, they seem to be in pretty good shape before they would have been removed. Now we will keep those as a buffer. Uh, we also, we did not have these white pine Norway spruce, so we planted nineteen trees between the property line and the fence. Okay, and a further buffer to mechanical pad right here where the condensers would be for the stores. I have shown a seventy-foot row of dark American arborvitae's, okay? And I do have some pictures of those right here. I have used them in some designs before, uh, City of Oneida and some other municipalities in really tight, I mean, with neighbors that are ten feet away, I've used these. And you can see some pictures for the board, okay? They're very tight. Uh, you can see the comments right here, a faster growing arborvitae. Thujia blah, 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 hedge like this forms an effective wall to make a private yard feel more secluded. Okay, this is, I've talked to my landscape architect over the years, uh, and you can see right here, right off the webpage, makes an excellent privacy screen when planted in a tight row. Okay, I am proposing these right here at four feet at planting, so you're not going to get little seedlings and three feet on site, on center. They're going to grow a tight thing and that's right here, seventy feet along here. Okay, so essentially you have existing trees, some nineteen other trees, a fence and these dark American, you got four rows of protection there. Okay, for that. Dumpster, that has not changed. Well, actually, I think the original one I had given you was PVC slating. As you can see in the package I handed out, it's fractured block as such, okay? That is fractured bu- block. The block is painted aged ivory, again, to match the store. Uh, and that would be located right here on Roman numeral. Okay, fully gated and enclosed as well. Also for further buffering from some of the residences to the west over here. You can see with the new design, what we did is here, I built some U's up. Again, I contacted a landscape architect. Asked him what's a great type of screening for low and he came up with these Texas Media U's. And as you can see, pictures right here of those. Okay, uh, they would be located right here along these nine parking spaces. And also there's a significant elevation change, approximately five to seven feet along, uh, Ridgewood, you can see the contour lines here to the west. Now what we did is we put those U's, those three-foot U's on top of a three-foot berm. Okay, so now I got six feet of screening right by these parking spaces. And then if you take the six-foot of screening minus the five to seven-foot contour, you're talking by the time you get to the residence across the street, it's a twelve-foot, maybe fourteen-foot grade change. Okay, uh, so that's some other stuff that we did over there. Uh, pedestrian access has pretty much stayed the same. We show a sidewalk right here coming off of Ridge, Ridgewood, and then we also have another pedestrian access right here off of East Ridge. Uh, they are both concrete and made that change, as you can see, they're both concrete aprons here. Uh, there is a bike rack over here on the west porch before it was out front, but it's right here. Uh, in regards to the stormwater basins, as requested by the board, uh, I did take a look at the, I forget, I think it's the Taco Bell or one of those, I did take a look. As you can see, my engineer did, we traded a lot of, made him go on Google as well. As you can see from here, uh, we take, took the stormwater management areas and I called it, dressed them up, landscaped them. You can see a combination of boulders, large boulders, tree. Those plantings just lets you, the board know, will, we are disturbing over one acre. The site is one point six acres. So therefore I have to meet all New York State's speedies and SWIP requirements. So those plantings will have to be specifically approved by the state. Uh, but that is not a problem, so you can see we dressed that up as well. In regards to lighting, I do not have, because this was just done last week and tweaked, this has been sent to my lighting engineer in Ohio. They have assured me I will have the lighting plan back by the end of this week, hopefully. Uh, and I can assure the board in the back of this, I do have the lighting. I will still use one hundred percent dark sky friendly compliant lighting, a hundred percent LED, full cutoff lights. Uh, mounting heights will probably be that, that twelve foot as well. Uh, but the lighting positions, these poles, I want the board not to look at that right now because they may change. But I can assure the board, there will be, you guys will have a foot candle and it will be zero, zero on all property lines. That is a requirement and that's what I've instructed them to do. Okay, so the lighting's not going to change. Bike rack, we hit that. Snow storage, uh, you can see the snow storage is right here, here, in the back here, on the side, we have one, two, three, five places for our stor- storage. Again, with thirty-eight percent green space on a one point six acre site, there's a lot of room for snow storage. So I'm, I'm very happy with that as well. Uh, the air machine at the request of the board, you can see the air machine is over in the, we will call it the east, uh, southeast corner right here. We put that as close to Wegman's loading docks as possible, uh, in case there's any noise, but again, that's buried right here. You guys will see, uh, it says air station right there, okay? So that's a way. Uh, in regards to fencing, we kept a black fencing. We have increased the fencing and there is the same fencing that you had on your information package. So what I did here is before we only had fencing along through here, probably sixty, eighty feet, we have run the black fencing the entire East Ridge, okay? We've also turned a corner with six feet here, just to kind of frame it, okay?
Excuse me, Christian, is this live? Can you hear me on this? I'm going to have this.
Okay. Yep, thank you. I'm sorry he was walking around. So what we've done is we framed this fencing right here, okay? Just so anyone coming this way, you, you kind of missed this, we wanted it to look nice and, you know, put kind of a six-foot fence over there, this black thing here. Again, now we've taken this black, uh, ornamental fence, we'll call it iron, across the whole front. We've turned a corner down Ridgeway. Turning the corner, the board had mentioned some sort of statement on the corner, I guess. Uh, and I'm going to flip to the s- sign real quick, just to jump around here. Because you'll see on the bottom of the sign in your package, sign number one, that was a freestanding sign or my original submittal. As you will see, it's a monument sign now. Okay, it's very similar to one I made in thirty-two square feet, ten feet high. But you can see the stone on the bottom of the monument sign. I did bring a sample of the stone and I will show you that as well. So here's what the stone will be, okay, on the bottom of the sign, okay? And again, it's over on Maiden and Fester. It's buck country, the speck is right on there as well. So in keeping the theme with the stone, what we want, decided to do, I was talking to my engineer and I called the fence guy and whatnot. On the corner, on the, would be the southwest corner right here, we have proposed a three-foot-high, four-feet-wide with two-foot wings, I call it wings on the side of it. It'll be three feet high right here. I talked to the XU Rochester Fence and they said they could tie this black ornamental fence into the ends of it. It would, this would be the stacked stone, which you've seen there, matching this monument sign, which is right here. And it'd be three feet high with a stone concrete cap, okay? And the fence would go into both sides of it. Uh, try to dress up the corner a little bit, break it. But again, I just want to note that we did return this approximately six feet of black fence and two feet down Ridgway, again, to frame it, so when you're kind of going in both directions. And I didn't, I did the down here, I just did the black ornamental fence down there. Uh, also the tree plantings, uh, along here, the roads, there's still two and a half inch red maples. I left those. Uh, again, there's four, six new trees as well here. I did hand a, a map out to the board earlier in regards to noise. I, I wanted to take a look at that and the board did mention that as well. Uh, I did take some measurements from the residences with an aerial. Of course, I did not go on their properties. Uh, but we did take some measurements from the mechanical pad, but it was, because it was brought up about noise. Okay, right here. Uh, so from the mechanical pad here to the property line, it's twenty-six feet. Pern aerial, you'll see my little map that I did, which is pretty accurate within a foot or two. You will see the closest residence to the rear of the mechanical pad is a hundred and twenty-one feet. Okay, I also submitted to the board a noise study that I had done. I, actually, what I did is took actual measurements from Maiden Lane and Fester. That's my newest store in the chain. Uh, that has the exact condensers and units underneath the mechanical pad. You can see from this letter, they went out there Friday, okay, with a noise level tester. And they took measurements at two, four, ten and fifteen feet. Why they took fifteen feet is because that's all I have between the back of my main lane store and the apartment complex out back. Okay, and then the apartments are literally ten feet from there. This property is going to be twenty-six feet, so that's going to grow eleven feet before the property line. And if you look at the decibel readings fifteen feet away, it's around the. And if you look at the decibel readings fifteen feet away, it's around the sixty two. It seems it drops two to three decibels every five feet. So if you did the math, but you know, from that, that's including no buffering, right? That's just straight, no buffering, no, no arborvitae's, no fence, no pine trees, no existings. By the time you get to the back of the residence, a hundred and twenty feet away, the decibel readings will probably be around ten. I gave you a comparison chart with a ten. And as you can see what a ten says, a needle dropping. Uh, that's what it says here. But the, the sixty is a normal air conditioner that was mentioned as well before. Those condensers for the freezer and cooler are equivalent to a residential air conditioner. Okay, uh, and then it's also close to refrigerator and in between a refrigerator and dishwasher. Uh, but again, that's the measurements taken at Maiden with no buffering whatsoever. You add these dark American arborvitae's here at plantings. You add a six foot solid wood fence. You add some Norway trees and you have some existing vegetation. I'm very, very confident there'll be hardly any noise whatsoever to property line or levels very extremely low. In regards to fuel, uh, fuel canopy, I wanted to take some measurements, just to let the board know as well. Uh, on this plan, you will see now from the measurements that the fuel canopy is a, the closest residential house would be two hundred and thirty feet from the fuel canopy. And that would be this house two thirty here and the houses back here are two hundred and thirty five feet. All these houses as shown here, it looks like their backyards are between ninety and a hundred feet to defend the property line. Okay, so the, the, the houses are not, you know, close to the property line as normally there's, they're decent sized backyards. Uh, so there's a buffer there. But I just wanted the board to see, you know, we did take these dimensions, we did look at those in regards to noise and lighting. Uh, I think I've covered most everything. I could entertain, uh, any questions from the board or we can let the public speak however you guys want to do it.
Any questions from the board members?
Um, on the site plan, there's a tree that's grayed, grayed out on the far left hand side. Is that an existing tree to remain?
That's an existing tree to remain, that is correct.
Okay, and if it's determined during the course of construction that it's not as good as maybe we originally thought, is that something that you would just?
I will put a red maple, two and a half inch caliper right there to match. I'd rather do it, but I know everyone likes to keep existing trees, so I'm, I'm the same.
Certainly, I just, sometimes they get there and they start digging around and they decide.
I'd be more than happy to, uh, if that's the case and I think it's going to go, I would contact the town first, of course, and get approval to re- replace that tree with a, a proposed tree.
And, um, was there some landscaping in this plan that didn't make it over to this plan on the, uh, eastern, yeah, right there?
Yes, there was, there were some low shrubs. My engineer landscape, we all looked at this fence guy. Uh, we figured to keep that, to put the focus on the fence, the shrubs would take away from that. And to maintain those shrubs in front of a fence right here with, with a sidewalk and whatnot. It's just, again, the black ornamental fence, I think draws your attention to it rather than the landscaping. I do have landscaping here on the freeze, on the monument sign, we dressed up here. And again, I, I think the, uh, stormwater management areas being landscaped up will, you know, there'll be plenty of landscaping.
Um, there's also a change in the way that the management area is illustrated on the new plan. Is that supposed to show stone or what is it, uh, trying to show?
This is stone right here. It's the same exact concept as the other one. This is, uh, kind of the large chunks of stone rip rap. We call them rip rap in, in the construction world. That's a rip rap. The da- the dark gray are large boulders, landscape rock as shown in that, uh, there. And then you have, you know, the plantings, of course.
You won't have any, um, weeds or anything grow, how will, if, if?
It's a bio retention pond, so underneath it is all, I already talked to my engineer, I made sure we could do this before we did it. These ponds are just bio retention. It doesn't really matter what you put over the top of them and that's really all you're doing is dressing those up. It's just the rocks are sitting on top of a bio retention. Uh, you're going to have your micro, you know, micro pool for bay quality. And in this site, uh, you know, impervious, preverse post is we're making some significant more green space. So therefore we'll probably have to treat for quality more than quantity. I know I'm kind of getting off, but me and my engineer did talk about this in depth. And he's very confident that we can do this here. It'll just, literally it'll be done just like a normal one and it'll be landscaped on top of that, just as you guys had mentioned.
No, I believe you. I just was, I wasn't sure about how the maintenance would be and if, 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 you know, weeds would come out through the rock. And then how would you, you know, would you have to go? But it sounds like you haven't, you haven't figured it out.
I, Chris, yes.
Can you just do me a favor? Can you just explain to us what a bio retention pond is so everybody behind you knows?
Yeah, it's a stormwater, it's a New York state speedies requires a permit when you're dis- disturb over one acre of property. And you look at pre versus post, meaning impervious surface. Uh, with this site, I could get the numbers, but, uh, the pre is, is what's there now and it's a lot of asphalt there now. Versus post, when you start banging thirty eight percent green space, uh, that's great. So therefore they're sized in according with a for bay. Where this, where it's any sediment is supposed to settle out and go into the micro pool. Where it's treated into a bio retention and then it goes into the bio and seeps into the ground.
So, so you would say that a bio retention pond is, is a place where water would go to go someplace else?
That is correct.
It's not going to stay, okay? I just wanted.
Yep, and that will design.
Audience to know that it's not a standing water.
It should be designed, it will be designed for a hundred year storm. Okay, and that's where they're designed for a hundred year storm, uh, which hopefully it's not your yearly storm. But it should be designed that way. Is there going to be some times it may not be quickly, like the other day back home, we had seven inches of rain. I mean, not much you can do, but it will dissipate and it'll be designed to dissipate.
Yep, I, the, um, mechanics for the building, are they part of that whole unit that's on the north side of the building?
Uh, yes, everything is underneath.
Air conditioner for the, the air handlers and all that stuff.
Everything is there. We choose not to do rooftops. First of all, rooftops are much noisier, believe it or not, when they're up in the air. Uh, keeping them down underneath the roof, they're covered out of the elements and there's a fence around them as well. So we do not do rooftop units to answer your question. All mechanicals for the building are underneath that mechanical pad.
So, so for clarity on the noise, if I can ask, so there's four units, correct?
That is correct.
So in the information you provided, you said it's the same as an air conditioner at home?
Yeah, that is correct. So what I did, rather than getting cut sheets and whatnot, which are very hard to get, by the way. Uh, it's just like doing miles per hour. You go out and you actually take some radar guns and see what people are really driving versus what the posted thing is. So I thought to myself, why not send somebody out to my most recent store, which just happens to be ten miles from here? And get exact readings right off of, uh, uh, this instrument, decibel, whatever it is reader. To get actual readings stand there when they all kicked on and whatnot. And so these, what you're seeing here are not, uh, proposed off of a cut. These are actual readings taken on Friday, September twenty fourth at the same exact store.
So I guess my question was, those readings are based on all four running?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. These were peak and I, I told them to do them at distances again. But I only could get fifteen feet because that store is fifteen feet from a property line there. It's much closer to apartments than this one is. So I just, you can extrapolate out basically three decibels per five feet. You know, that's, that's how I did that. But I wanted you guys to have actual readings, okay, from what's, what's real.
So for clarity, if I could ask, I just want to make sure, I'm looking at all the correct documents because we've gotten them at all different times. So the final site plan is the one marked C two zero one?
That is correct.
Okay, and then I don't see any reference to the, the overhead. This is the correct?
That, that is correct, yep.
So this would be submitted as another?
That is correct.
I just want to make sure this becomes part of the package.
Yep.
Okay, and then I see a lighting plan we got before, but I think you're telling me this is no good. So what lighting plan do we have tonight?
We do not have a lighting plan. Again, that is coming, I could not get it done in time. It takes a while to do and, uh, we'll have it by the end of this week or early next week for submittal. I told them zero foot candles, the same as that one. Uh, so they'll, they will design it, same fixtures and whatnot, but it'll be zero foot candles. They may have to move a little bit.
Is the bike, where is the bike rack on here?
Bike rack is over here, Roman numeral eight, back in here.
Got it.
Anyone coming off of there, it's right there. It's kind of off to the side.
And then the sign package isn't dated, but I want to make sure it's.
The sign, that's why I gave you guys a new one tonight. Brad had some questions with that. The original one I sent out was a freestanding sign, but this information package, which I did give a copy to Michelle, uh, as well, and I can send you a PDF as well.
My question is, is, is it the one dated July twenty sixth or not?
No.
It's this package.
It's, I just sent it out tonight and it right in front of you. It's got the same cover page, but it's different. I set it right on top of your.
Yeah. It should have had the, um, decibel study with it.
Yep. I set a package right on your, everyone's desk.
I have a question for staff real quick, if that's okay Bernie?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, there was some discussion about a no fuel trucks or no delivery truck sign on Ridgewood.
So the, um, I've spoken to the commissioner of public works and he's indicated that he will, um, take the steps required to post signage north of the curb cut on Ridge Road. That limits truck travel either by, I'm not sure if they're going to do it by weight or by axle. But it would be limiting truck travel northbound on Ridgewood beyond the curb cut.
Okay, and, and, um, regardless of?
That's under, that's under the purview of the commissioner of public works, yes.
Regardless, the only question I have is regardless of how they measure it, it will be enough to limit?
Yes.
Fuel truck traffic?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, or even delivery trucks that are delivering, uh, retail, like whatever is being sold, retail goods at that location. So those trucks would not be able to travel there either. So it's going to be a matter of ma- ba- balancing, making sure that those type of trucks can't go down the street, but doesn't preclude, you know, local residents from driving their campers.
Sure, and then my only other question is, did, did the commissioner, um, consider anything on the other end of Ridgewood? So anyone not wanting to take the left off of East Ridge Road?
Yeah, we, we, he would, um, if the, if there's a limit on the road, he likely signed, we place them both, yes.
Okay, perfect.
I, I would also, I forgot something I'd let the, I'd put on record for the board and, and for the resident as well is, is Bern Derry be willing to restrict our hours of delivery? Okay, I don't know if I've put this out there before, but I would, I would restrict the hours of delivery, uh, between the hours of seven and seven. Okay, I think that would be a, a good mitigating factor as well.
This, um, fence on the rear, so is, would it be fair to say that the placement of the fence is going to create an illusion for the neighbors in, um, the rear of the property that their backyard has the illusion of appearing larger than it actually is because of the placement of the fence, but it's not for real?
That is correct. It would look like, it would look like their properties would grow, well, there'll be some Norway spruces and white pines between there. But again, I, I wanted to get it tighter to everything to re- knock the, you know, any sort of noise out. And that's why I did it. I can jump that on the other side of the pine trees?
No, I think, I just wanted to elevate that, uh, because I, I think that that is something that maybe that those residents are, might not know. And that, you know, it's certainly not, not at their property, but it does create a, the view that their property is larger than it actually is.
Uh, the, the, those large trees back here, as you can see in the plan, are within one foot of the property line. So that's, and I'll have it all staked, of course, if I, if I get to that point. But those trees, as you'll see, that's why I'm going to leave them, it's a good reference for them. That is the edge within one feet, they are one feet on our property line.
And you guys will mow and?
We will maintain that most definitely, yes.
Any other questions?
I have a, I have just a, a minor design point. Um, I know we talked a little bit about the air station at, at workshop and so on.
Yes.
Um, I'm wondering if you would consider shifting that slightly. Um, where we have the pedestrian connection through the parking lot. Uh, and then that, that goes, also goes out to Ridge. Um, I'm wondering if that north, south leg that's connecting the diagonal leg to Ridge Road?
Yes.
Could shift whatever number of feet you think would be required to the east? Uh, I haven't drawn, if you want to come peek at what I just did, um.
So you're talking, if I went up here, uh, on that wall, you're talking about moving the station from that corner down to here?
Yeah, so- somewhere along that edge. I mean, I'm just concerned that if, if someone's getting air, they're going to be parked across the, uh, pedestrian diagonal concrete crosswalk there.
He, yeah, the back of their car, it's a twenty foot parking spot, their tail, they could.
That's assuming they've pulled in the parking spot and I've gotten air plenty of times and you get whatever the closest tire is you can to the air station.
True, so my concern with moving it here is, of course, then they're going to be going across that sidewalk with a hose? And anyone coming down here is?
I would, I would move the sidewalk over two or three feet to create, um.
Some green space.
Yeah, yeah.
Listen, I have no problem doing that, that's, I just always keep it tight for snow plow, for snow plowing reasons is the only thing is I like to keep it consistent with impervious surface.
Sure.
Right, so when you plow, it's, I just tell you what's going to happen to that two foot strip.
Yep.
You and I know what's gonna.
Yep, I'm just, I'm just concerned, I think there's going to be pedestrian foot traffic coming in off that sidewalk. And I think it's going to get blocked.
Uh, I could move it one down in the next parking space if I had to, truly north?
I think what's also helpful with that idea is that I've been in situations when there's been more than one person using the air. And sometimes if there's not a good way to queue, uh, where the person behind it creates. So if it were moved the way that Mr. Reed is suggesting, it would allow people to, um, people hopefully would queue along the, um.
So he, 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 here's another one I got for you, uh, what about putting it right here? So anyone coming in here could queue right here. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay.
So right here. So anyone coming in here, they see it right here, they can queue parking this way? And then we don't have a situation. The, the air machine is literally this big.
Especially if it's a nice one. I, I will pass the gas stations that don't have the good, uh, air hoses to go, you know, and they tell you how much air pressure.
So that's very important, but it's the same one on Maiden Lane and Fester. That one is right when you pull in off of Maiden in the prime parking spot. So by doing that right here, right, uh, that would allow people to stage, like you said, and it's not in the way of the driveway. That moves it from here to here. Again, I assure you, it's this big, but this big, if you look over, it's a little digital one.
I, I, I prefer, I prefer Mr. Reed's suggestion honestly, and, and I understand your snow plowing concern. But if they hop that curb and hit the green space, they're going to knock your air thing out, right? So that's what he's saying, if you scooch that sidewalk to the east two feet and put that on, put the air.
I, if that's what the board wants me to do, I can do that.
I would, I would prefer that because I, I can see in a situation where you get, I don't know, sometimes I get gas at BJ's and you see people queued up for that thing and you got five people waiting for air. And I can see that making it, uh, a, a, a large traffic issue getting into the site.
Two feet, move air machine. Okay, consider it done.
Especially because that person would have to back up, I, in, in theory to get out of that spot. And if there are people, you know, you've got a hairy situation.
Okay, so I'm going to move this air machine, I'm just to draw my plans so everyone knows. I keep going here, I'll go over here for you guys. As I'm going to move it from this corner right here, okay, over to here. And we're going to grow this sidewalk to the east by two feet and put it in that green strip, correct?
That would make me happy.
So you're going to move it to, I'm sorry, to the east?
Sidewalk's going to be moved two, two feet to the east towards Wegmans, we'll call it. Uh, there'll be a two foot green strip there. In that two foot green strip about centered, uh, we will move the air machine there.
I apologize, you're moving the air machine east also?
Uh, the air machine will be moving to the south.
Oh, to the south?
Southwest technically. Yep. Okay.
I have two other design questions if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Um, I'm wondering if the applicant, uh, would consider adding any of the same arborvitae, uh, directly behind the dumpster enclosure? Uh, potentially to even wrap the corners of the dumpster enclosure a few feet. Uh, be, I think, great in a number of years that it would help with noise. Um, on the, on the, on the residential side, on the north side of the enclosure.
Okay.
Same idea of what you're doing.
Yep, so over here, I'll point with my thing, so we're all on the same page here. We're going to put arborvitae's on the west side of dumpster enclosure, approximately six feet down. We'll put them along between the fence and there, and then we'll put them along this side.
You nailed exactly what I was hoping you were thinking, yes, that's, that's, I think that would be from a potential noise standpoint.
Okay.
I think that could certainly help.
I can do that.
And then my only other question at the moment is, can you speak a little bit about the, uh, curb cut sizes? So I see the width of the, uh, existing driveway to be used on Ridge Road is twenty seven foot at its throat?
Yes, and the other one is proposed to be thirty foot, which is a standard design of a county, uh, curb cut and a. uh curb cut and a New York State DOT curb cut.
Sure, on a town road though, so.
Uh yes, and on a town road, yes.
I'd just like to know why you think it's necessary to have the full thirty feet over there.
Uh radiuses for turning, uh pickup trucks, anyone, you know, say towing a uh I have a fishing boat, if I was towing a boat on that thing, getting that radius, making this turn uh right here.
Yeah, I do a lot of truck turning studies, and you don't need thirty feet to do a pickup truck with a boat. So I'm just curious why we're why we're making that the larger, more appealing.
I would have loved to make this thirty feet, but I didn't wanna mess with it with the county because it was twenty-seven. Uh all my driveways are always thirty feet at every project I've ever done, I've never had an issue with them. You know, somebody's saying they're too wide or or too less, but uh ideally, you know, I thi- I think thirty would, I really prefer thirty on that, if at all possible.
All right, I hear you, and I'll hold my judgment on that for now.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can you go back to the arborvitae though? You said that's between the fence and the rear of the dumpster.
Yes, right here.
And down which side?
Uh both sides, I'm gonna do east and west. Or do I have to do the east, because Wegmans is there? Save me some arborvitae's, it's up to you guys. They're right here, see this between, this is just facing Wegmans right here? But I'll do whatever. Whatever the board desires.
I think it would be good to kind of encapsulate the sound, but that's me.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm one person, so.
Yeah, I don't.
I just wanted to make sure I captured it right, so. I will do it, it's an additional five or six arborvitae's.
I have a question for staff while we're on this, um it seems um that the site, more than others, uh really relies heavily on the use of landscaping for more than aesthetic reasons. So is there um some mechanism that we could use for um a reevaluation of the condition of the landscaping after a period of time to make sure that it's still in place?
So there's a couple of ways that that the board can do that, sometimes the applicant will provide a and there's often on the notes a guarantee of the plants for a certain number of years. However, when there's a site plan that shows significant landscaping, especially when it is being used to serve as a buffer, um then that that's binding, so that over time, if five years from now or ten years from now half the things are dead, particularly the ones that were subject to so much discussion, the town can then take enforcement action to say, you're, you know, you're not currently in conformance with the approved site plan, and can you please replant the vegetation that's missing in X, Y, or Z location? And that's happened in the past in other sites where something's deviated or things that were planted did not make it.
I just have wanna follow up, did we hear anything back from the county on the U-turn?
Um so that we did, we did reach out to the county, and they indicated that the um current uh no U-turn signs that are located in that vicinity, there'll, there's no anticipated change to those.
So they're okay with what is happening? They're allowing a U-turn in front of that driveway?
There's no, there's a no U-turn sign posted.
Doesn't actually apply to that, it applies to the one before that.
Yeah, so when I question them about it, I certainly can revisit that with them, the they were.
I want that revisited, I think that that's a hazard.
So it's a county DOT, so we, the town has no jurisdiction over them?
If they put it in writing, I will be very, very happy.
Right, exa- but again, what I would say is this board has no purview over the town, the DOT, the county DOT's decision-making on turning movements or lack of thereof on a roadway.
As long as they've acknowledged that that's what they're going to allow, I'm fine with it, but I want it in writing, I really do. And then, this is a secret question. Um, did we hear anything from any of the other agencies, including East High? Or East Ridge, sorry.
Yeah, East Ridge, the high school?
Yeah.
They're not a, they're not a review agency for the purposes of Seeker, and they've provide, but they they would be aware of the of the of the application just by virtue of communication for the hearings, and we've heard no comments or feedback from that, from them.
Then I'm good with that.
Okay.
All right. I'm ready to hear from the neighbors.
Any other questions from any of the other board members? Okay, if we could just take a couple minutes break, if a board member had to take a break, I wanna make sure they hear all the public input. So. Um what I'll do is, you can have a seat, sir. We're gonna take a short break.
You want me to leave the plans up?
Yeah, please.
So Carrie? Oh, thank you. Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I just thought.
Hi, thank you, did you need me?
Yeah, oh, you got it.
Yeah, yeah.
You wanna do it?
It's up, yeah, I can do it, and then I can, oh yeah.
Oh, no.
Say it again?
Well, I just look at these curb radiuses, especially compared to what we're seeing right here, and it looks astronaut, I mean, it's double. Right?
I texted, I texted Bob all over here. That's a monster.
Yeah. Because I, right now, I'm gonna push for that. I mean, a two, a a, you know, two-way traffic in a normal parking lot is twenty-four to twenty-five feet, period. Right. But I also think that these radii are, which I understand is more giving W purview, but the this this radii is huge. But I gotta, I wanna just make that feel, I want like, I want these radiuses to pull in, you know, and like, you can see this radius is much less.
We certainly don't need it on this side, they maybe need it over here, but this one, no.
But I, you know, if if this were more. You know what I mean? If that was more like that. Well, I don't know, well. She's great. Hangs out, you know?
Well, I thought you might condition.
Hey, Mary, how are you?
I know, I know.
It's a hard lesson to learn.
Well, yeah.
I know, I didn't, I got a packet, I didn't, if I did, I'd have everything except. Which is probably, I know I said that I did get them.
Uh now you're in trouble, I know how to get all the.
There you go. Yeah, no, they uh they were rebranding.
Everybody, please head back to their seats.
I understand, but that also is the unfortunate nature of what happened.
Just go up to the podium as soon as they call. What is, oh. Um. Not necessarily, I mean, I think that would be considered more, yeah, more um. So what what's? I was looking for that. Thank you. Carrie, what is this, by the way? Type. Unlisted. I'm sorry. Type two unlisted.
Unlisted, unlisted is short.
Hey Brad. I like to ask, just in case somebody like.
Folks, please have a seat if we could.
Can you ask for an update on where the town board stands before the public hearing?
Good guys. So um reconvene the meeting, Carrie, before we open up the public hearing, could you do two things for us? One, uh give us a status of where this is with the current town board, and in addition, um what, you know, explain to everybody what we have purview over and what we don't.
Sure thing, so um at the September meeting, the town board um continued the public hearing on the special use permit associated with the gasoline pumps, that's the only aspect of the project that's subject to a special use permit. They did close the the hearing after hearing testimony and public comment, and it's my understanding that they plan to make a decision at their October meeting related to the special use permit, and um and in doing so, they can consider potential uh conditions if if deemed um appropriate or required for as part of the special use permit. But as we indicated at the town board meetings, it is a permitted use, and the special use permit just allows that extra look and potential reasonable conditions if they are warranted for a a for a special use. Um for this board, we're here for site plan review, and that is really to look at the potential configuration of um buildings, landscape, um um any paved areas, sidewalks, um public, you know, utilities, and things that impact how the physical land is developed. This is a permitted use and a special use permit, a permit, a permitted, especially permitted use um under the zoning code, which means that it's a, it's it it's been determined that this site is the kind of place where a gas station and a retail and a convenience store can be located. So really, this board's purview isn't, is really over the physical layout and configuration um of the of the property um and how and where buildings and landscaping and other um appurtenances are located on the site.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Please come to the podium, please make a line. So um this goes pretty quick, as much as possible.
The mic- that microphone will, if you are there at the podium, the applicant, because he was moving and having to go to the board, it up to the the posted boards is why we have, we had him hold a handheld.
And all I ask is you please keep your comments to five minutes, if you could, please.
Yeah.
But if you need more time, just let us know.
Okay.
All right, my name is Sandy Orem, and I live at twenty Salem Road. And um I guess we thought that this was related when we read the paragraph about tonight's um forum to speak at, it did talk about the gas um station canopy, it, you know, and um it all has to do with the gas station, the gas canopy, and the curb cut onto Ridgewood. And myself, Mary, Joe, and Bob went around um the neighborhood on Saturday for two hours letting neighbors know about this meeting, and I went around yesterday for four and a half hours sending out um notices of this um meeting. And you know, um Christian Bernal has this elaborate plan and how this will look really fancy and great, but it's still a gas station, and it still has a curb cut onto Ridgewood. And twenty-one eighty East Ridge Road, in a two-mile radius of that, there's fourteen gas stations. And there'll be fifteen once Quiklys is built, so this will make sixteen. And I'm just wondering why you wanna invest, you think it's a good investment to have a gas station, another gas station? And um with the future of electric, because Ford um cars uh all their passenger vehicles will be a hundred percent electric by twenty thirty, twenty thirty. So um their F Ford F-150 will be electric in twenty twenty-two. Their Explorer will have an all-electric in twenty twenty-three, their Jeep Wrangler, a Jeep Wrangler in twenty twenty-two, and this just goes on to show you that we're going electric, we don't need another gas station. So this gas station, if it's put in, will be polluting our air because it's so close to our houses and our soil with the droplets of um fuel. And um these bushes that he's going to plant as a barrier, it's not, they're just bushes, and it's this is our neighborhood, our neighborhood is quiet, it's very quiet, and a curb cut onto Ridgewood is going to ruin our neighborhood, because if there's a eighty-five to a hundred and five um customers per peak hour expected, it's going to, there's gonna be so many cars, it's gonna be crazy. And I called Berkeley Brain at Channel Ten, and he said, call me back once it's built, once the curb cut is there, he said, because this looks, he said, I'm sorry to say this, but it looks like it's going to be just like the Chick-fil-A in Greece, where they built that in the wrong spot and all of those cars were all down the street, and it was just crazy. And he said that he was really sorry, but to call him back. Because that's what's gonna happen, because no one's gonna wanna turn left onto East Ridge Road from Ridgewood, that's just nonsense. And they're just gonna go right through, and it's gonna be crazy, and our neighborhood is quiet, and it won't be anymore, and people will move, and our property value will go down, and our livelihood, our everything, it will affect us, everything will change, and um I know you want that plot of land to be, you know, so it is sold and everything, but um that's just the wrong spot, and what I heard Saturday and Sunday was we don't need another gas station. We like Burn Dairy, but we don't need a gas station there, you know, it's the wrong stop. What's gonna happen to my kids playing and riding their bikes all around there? What's gonna happen to us? And I just heard all those comments, and it's heartbreaking. And um so this curb cut is the biggest mistake, and a gas station is not needed. We're not, we're going towards a. And a gas station is not needed. We're not, we're going towards electric and I just hope that you all think about the planet and all the things that are going on and make choices according to that. So, um.
I'm so sorry to interrupt. That was the five minute mark. I'm.
Do you need a few more? Do you got it?
I just, I just wanted to say that. And I don't have anything against Burn Dairy. I think it's just the wrong spot. So.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anna Zangy, uh, 60 Abington Road. Before I start, I just want to say I'm still against having the pumps. And then I'll just talk about the plan. The property sits higher than the rest of the neighborhood, about five feet. Just wondering if there's plans to lower the grade. Because if it stays at that level, then it'll be towering over and also a sound travels downhill and so we'll get most of the noise. If they were to be level, there's more of a chance of less noise and less light. Um, and then the next thing was the abrevieties. From my experience, abrevieties are very sensitive to salt. And I just checked on my phone to see, and yes, they're very salt, um, sensitive to salt spray. So really not a good choice near a parking lot because the bottom half will be dead and the top will be alive and it'll kind of defeat the purpose. I looked it up and junipers are, are the most tolerant, so that would probably be a better choice. Um, and then I just want to talk about the exits. Really don't want to see an exit on Ridgewood. Prefer they both be on Ridge Road. If there one has to be because of some kind of rule or law. I'd like to see it so that it points, it directs traffic towards Ridge Road. So it's, you can only go south and no one can turn right into our neighborhood. And I, even still, I mean, he did a, a sound study and I believe him because those are new, it's new equipment for the, the compressors. But I think as things start to age, they'll start to get louder. And that's not something that's changed out every year. So I would like to see that the compressors get moved to the front of the property along with the dumpster. Um, I know there's a lot of rodents in Arondacoyt and the farther away they can be from our houses, the better off we would be. And those are just my thoughts.
Could you say your name and address again? I'm sorry.
It's Anna Zangy and it's 60 Abington Road. I live right behind, right across from Wegmans, right where Wegmans building starts.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Akins. I live at 125 Worthington Road. I just wanted to restate my concerns from the last meeting and also just reframe my argument against the inclusion of the gas pumps at the Burn Dairy. Um, I like to frame it in terms of pollution. So some of these have been slightly addressed, um, but since it's your job as the planning committee to hopefully mitigate some of our concerns, um, or the concerning aspects of this project, I hope you take it into consideration. Um, so light pollution in this case from the lights over the gas pumps, especially if the gas pumps were open late into the night or 24 hours as suggested. Also from the increased traffic, which is mentioned, he has no plan for at the moment through the neighborhood and headlights shining into houses. So according to a literature review in the Journal of Environmental Management, light pollution, quote, "is a major environmental and health problem known to be associated with depression, insomnia and other health disorders in humans," end quote. Noise pollution, in this case, from the music or ads that are played at the gas pumps. Also from the increased traffic through the neighborhood, delivery trucks and added traffic with its muffler sounds and music. So according to an article by Hammer et al. in 2014, noise exposure is associated with short-term effects, including decreased sleep quality and quantity, increased annoyance, stress and distraction, as well as chronic effects such as hypertension, reduced learning and productivity and endocrine disruption. These effects taken together are associated long-term with an increased risk of heart disease. Water and soil pollution, well, it's great that we have more green space. Sorry. This also means that there's more porous matter for runoff to absorb through. Um, so this is the argument that I made last time. I feel that it was not adequately addressed at the end of the meeting. Even if the underground tanks and pipes are 100% leak-proof, runoff exists. Every time you pump gas, some falls onto the ground. The rain rinses us off down the hill and into our neighborhood or into this pond and then into our neighborhood. So included in gas is a chemical called benzene. According to a literature review in the American Industrial Hygiene Association Journal, quote, "Benzene has been recognized as a toxic chemical capable of causing both acute and chronic poisoning. Chronic effects center on the blood-forming system and lead to the possible induction of leukemia, a major concern." Also, quote, "The magnitude of exposure is greatest for those individuals exposed occupationally to benzene." However, a far greater number of individuals are exposed as a result of benzene released from gasoline filling stations, as in this case, from auto exhaust emissions and from the use of tobacco products. Again, I like to grow some of my own produce in my yard. I don't want to feed cancer-causing chemicals to myself or my loved ones. Air pollution, gasoline and its emissions like motor vehicle exhausts, release volatile organic compounds and other reactive toxins, again, including benzene, toluene, ethyl benzene, xylens and hexane into the air. According to another study by Ying Rom Reng in 2008, gas station workers had higher levels of these compounds in their bodies than their counterparts who worked in an office. They had also, quote, "An elevated lifetime cancer risk ranging from 53 to 630 per million, thus exceeding the normal risk of one per million." While not as concentrated as directly at the gas station, these are the same pollutants that would be released into our neighborhood's air. For the purpose of clarification, I would like to ask, at the end of the last meeting, if I heard correctly, the gentleman from Burn Dairy said both, that there are no regulations to follow when it comes to air pollution and also that Burn Dairy follows the regulations established when it comes to air pollution. I would like to know which of these statements is true. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, um, my name's Lauren Sharp. I live at 39 Ridgewood Drive, which is right there on the map. So my house is facing there. I have a one-year-old and a three-year-old. I'm very concerned about 24 hours during the night and it has me a little bit nervous that he can't speak to what the lighting situation is going to be. I recognize that it's raised up and he's said that they're building, um, fencing, but from my children's bedroom, that's not going to make a difference having a wall because they're obviously raised up. So any type of lighting, especially during the night, is going to really impact my sleep. So I'm kind of begging any of you parents out there who at one point had small children, please be sympathetic to that. And I'm also concerned about, um, the increase in traffic. I grew up in West Arondacoyt on Sagamore Drive. I know for a fact if I was driving previously or not, if I'm getting gas at Burn Dairy and then I'm going to leave, unless I have other errands to run on Ridge Road, I'm not going to turn back onto Ridge Road to get home. I'm going to cut through the side street that prevents me from having to do an additional light because it's the quicker method. But now having a one-year-old and a three-year-old that live on that street that like to pull their wagon and just be outside, especially in a pandemic when we're not going inside places very much. I'm, I hope you guys just consider their safety because while he may be eliminating the oil tankers and I know that he did traffic studies, I don't think it necessarily is going to account for the increase in cars. Because then you're getting all of West Arondacoyt on top of anybody who's north of Ridge Road. My mom, for example, she still lives on Sagamore. She avoids the, uh, Ridge Culver, or the Hudson Titus Wegmans and will cut through to Ridge Culver because coming off of 590, it's the easier exit. Again, that's, uh, those are the safety and then 24 hours. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Christina Fodor at 109 Wallford Road. Basically here to support my Arondacoyt, um, resident friends. And, um, concerns about 24 hours if Wegmans is required to close or if they close at 12, I think they should be consistent, just like with the previous dentist, um, with the lights. Be consistent around with the buildings around them. So, um, why should that be open 24 hours? And, um, regarding, um, maintenance of the fence, what's the cadence of maintenance going to be for these fences? Uh, trees? And where's the data behind spruce trees being a barrier of sound? Um, that one's new for me and maybe I need to go back to Google. Um, also, is there an unbiased noise level of testing that has been done outside of Burn Dairy people? Because obviously they're going to say it's fine. Um, I would probably take my own resources and do my own testing if you would accept something like that. Or do you just require the people putting the, um, the business there? Um, so as far as selling your house, if people have to sell their house, there's something called phase one that they have to go through. I think it's an environmental thing. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but there is this phase one that you have to pass or pay for or something. So, um, I'm kind of standing by with them. So and the traffic is another topic that I'm sure you've all heard before. So, um, just wanted to give my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Sandy. I live at 46 Abington Road. I've been at that residence for 45 years. And in 45 years, I have never had anyone come up to me and say, you know what we need? What Arondacoyt really needs on Ridge Road is a gas station. You know, there's no place to get gas. Or have they ever come up to me and said, you know, I can't get a good corn dog on Ridge Road where Burn Dairy would see, you know, those dogs that are sitting on those rollers just waiting to be purchased? Nobody's ever asked me that. And I look at all these adjustments that Burn Dairy has made with abrevieties and trees and landscaping and fences, et cetera. To me, that's a signal that it's in the wrong place, that they're making all of these adjustments to put it in a place where it doesn't belong. To think that a curb cut, moving out onto Ridgewood, is not going to increase the traffic on that, on that street, you haven't been down there because that's a direct access to Culver Road. And people are going to take that route right out of that curb cut instead of going left because you only have one or two cars and you're going to be backed up there, okay? Waiting to get onto Ridge Road, you will not be able to get onto Culver Road south from either one of those exits. So they're going to head down Ridgewood, Ridgewood, excuse me. So to think that that's not going to affect the traffic there is wrong. It just is. I don't understand why they have to have two, the exit out onto Ridgewood. Wegmans enters all their trucks and all their customers right from Ridge Road. Everything goes in and out, customers and trucks from Ridge Road. Now you can post signs on Ridgewood that say truck limits or weight limits, et cetera, no truck deliveries. And I don't know how that's going to be any more effective than the no U-turn signs that sit at the top, at the corner of Ridgewood and Ridge Road. And they sit there and they pull U-turns there all day long. Coming out of the plaza, they pull a U-turn and head down Ridge Road West. Those are my concerns. I think it's, uh, I think it's in the wrong place. There's plenty of places. It's not needed at all. I can't think, believe that people have approached the planning board saying, we need another gas station. You're putting one there at, at, uh, Wombach's, less than, uh, it's like seven tenths of a mile away. That's it.
Excuse me, Chairman. I'm sorry to interrupt. You can say, I'm sorry, I just wanted to, to bring something to your attention, just to, for the, for the board's benefit and also for the, for the folks here and the folks watching at home. The town board, town provisions, town code, there's nothing that provides limitation on the types of businesses, how many of them can be located in the town. As long as they're compliant with town code, nothing in our town code gives the planning board or the town board the authority to say, no, we've reached too many. So I just want people to understand that, that the planning board doesn't have that purview. Either does the town board. It's a private marketplace decision for the same reason why we have two McDonald's and multiple drugstores and each, each industry makes a determination on its locations that work for them. And so the, unless there's a zoning code that limits, in our zoning code, there is no limitation on the number or the types or the concentration of certain business types within the municipal boundary. And I'm not familiar with really any place in our area that does that. But I just want the board to know that. I want the, the residents to understand the limits of the town's purview as it relates to site selection. And in this case, we have no control over that. The zoning is in place. They've indicated this is a spot that works for them. So we don't have any purview over that.
Thank you. Next person.
Hi, Patty Burke. I'm at 122 Worthington Road. So Ridgewood dead ends in my driveway. So curb cut on Ridgewood. Obviously, that's going to be a massive impact on my house. Another thing, I don't know if you realize, but as the traffic goes down Ridgewood to Worthington, that light, there's no right on red. So now as everyone's waiting for the light to, uh, change, I've got cars backed up past my driveway. You know, I was thinking tonight, and I'm just going to put it plainly, I may have to sell my house because of my property values. And I think, you know, local government is supposed to be for the people who live in the town. And I think we've all made it pretty clear. We don't think this is the right spot for this because of the impact. And for a gas station and a convenience store, that any one of us could drive a quarter of a mile to and get anything we need. You know, I'm going to ask each one of you, consider if this was going into your neighborhood. Consider where I'm at, I've got light shining in my living room all night long from cars coming down the road. I've got cars driving by my house. And that's everyone down the row. I mean, we're all here to say, this isn't the right place. So I'd like, you know, to ask you, consider if this was you and in your neighborhood. That's all I have.
Thank you.
My name's Michael Donahue. I live at 12 Salem Road. Just want to quickly address the her point, what she brought up. Common sense says we don't need one. In this room, you have Arondacoytians who bought their houses due to how neighborhood appeal was before this was agreed on. And that will definitely change after it's built. As I wouldn't have bought my house, I live at 12 Salem in the first place if it was there. We work in Arondacoyt. We shop here. We raise kids here. We spend money here. We talk about enjoyable or quiet way of life is. Is that not what you want from your town folks? I haven't heard a single voice pro anything about this project. It's a redundant offering of every item on its shelf and outside its doors. And quite frankly, it's pissing a lot of people off to talk about it for the fifth time. I will heavily lean moving if this is approved. And I'm sure that if it is, you will need to add streetlights as well as speed bumps down Ridgewood. I'm sure you wouldn't want this in your neighborhoods and we have thoroughly and plaitly said a profound no. So I hope that means something to the board. Also consider all the litter that'll be thrown out of the windows. It'll just blow around in our neighborhood. That hasn't been addressed by anybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Adam Field, 54 Abington Road. So I know, I mean, what you guys can control is obviously this plan. And obviously everything we're saying, our biggest concern is the curb cuts. Once you approve that and it's put in, Ridgewood, it's, it's going to be destroyed. Every single customer that goes into there that has to live or that does live north of Ridge Road is going to cut through that neighborhood. It's going to be destroyed. And what's going to happen is we're going to have to be back here begging you guys for help. Saying again, how do you control the customer traffic cutting through our road? We're going to be begging for speed bumps. You'll probably come and put up the radar gun thing there, showing people how fast they're going. It does nothing. And at some point, some of us have been talking, at what point do we say, just close off our road? You've ruined it. Just close off our road so no one can cut through? It, it's just not a good place for it. If they can't get the road to work on Ridge Road, you should not approve this, this cutout to ruin that road. It's a neighborhood and we don't want every single customer cutting through there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Jeremy McGuire, 15 Ridgewood Drive. So this is my house here or here on this map. So like everyone else was saying, that curb cut right there is basically almost across from my driveway. So now when I'm backing out of my driveway, I might have to wait for however many cars are coming out of there. My question is why, why can't there be? My question is, why, why can't there be an entrance here and an entrance here to keep everything on Ridge Road? I think that would make everybody else happier. And the other concern I have is
If you'll just grab that microphone that's over there on the table. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Sorry. Thank you. So yeah, like I was saying, if there was a curb cut here and a curb cut here, it would keep everything on Ridge Road. And I think would solve a lot of problems. My other concern is obviously, living right here, there's going to be headlights coming into my house. I think we dropped off pictures the last time we were here. But our bedroom window faces directly out that way. So that's our biggest concern. Thank you.
Hi there, Larry Vandemel in thirteen Abington Road. I feel a bit blindsided because this, this is totally different than what was at the last meeting. And I'm just hoping that we get a chance to look at these plans before you guys vote on them. So we can really be thorough about, about what's going to happen here. I, I, to be honest, I'm way happier with this plan than the last plan because now I don't have gas tanks in my backyard. But there's just so many other things to consider. And, and also what, what, every different meeting that I've been to, we're hearing different things. And it's all comes down to basically, they can put whatever they want there because it's zone commercial. And I think there needs to be some option for residents and homeowners to do the same thing as businesses and ask for a variance. It's like, there's been several variances for this property. But we don't have that option to have a variance to say, we don't want a twenty-four hour business in our neighborhood. And I think that's something that's really missing with this whole process, that, that we're not really being represented. We're coming in here and being told, well, there's really nothing you can do about it. You know, except these little tiny things. And I really think that should be addressed. So I, I don't, I, I really hope that we have another, another meeting to go before this gets voted on. So we can take a thorough look at these plans. I can't come to the four o'clock meetings because I work. So I wasn't at the workshop. So this is the first view I've had of this thing completely. And, and like I said, there's, there's a lot that is greatly improved. And I really appreciate what he's doing to try and kill the sound and, and the light pollution and everything. But we need some time to consider this. So thanks. That's all I got.
My name is Bob McCormick. I live at thirty-ninety-two Culver Road. And as I was here at the special use permit meeting, I'll say it again. I'm here to represent the young couple that lives directly behind me with young kids. I mean, little, little guys. That, that curb cut on Ridgewood, that's, that's kitty corner to their house. Their, that, that's, that's a big, big mistake. A lot was said just now about what the purview of this board is all about. I'd love to know the terms of the sale of this property. Because was the town the owner of this property? Was, was the town the
Are you calling on me? I, I don't know who was the previous owner.
I'm sorry, and just for a process perspective, public hearing, you don't, you can ask the
Public hearing, but yeah.
You can ask the questions. We'll have the applicant address them at the end.
Well, nonetheless.
Or, and the town.
If, if I were this man, I would have said, I'll buy this property contingent upon approval by this board. That would have been the smart thing to do. And if the town is the owner, that's a little shady. The second thing though, is just the bottom line. What's going to happen to property values if this project goes through? Not only the property values of that one neighborhood, which is huge. That's like three or four streets of houses are all going to plummet. Because you opened that up to Ridgewood. Once again, I will be here for the special use permit again, because there's no way we should have gas. Gasoline, I hope kills the deal. And there's no way we need another gas station, particularly in twenty-twenty-one. How many more stats do we need to say about electric vehicles? So I'm asking this board to do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, sir. Excuse me, sir. I missed your address. Thirty-nine?
Thirty-ninety-two Culver Road.
Thirty-ninety-two. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before you come up, I think you already spoke. Is there anybody else who hasn't spoken yet? I just want to make sure that everybody has a chance first. And just for the record, normally we allow you to address once, but we'll see what we're doing here. Okay.
Oh, I haven't come up before.
No, you're fine.
Okay. I'm Jennifer Kanter and Scott's my husband. We live at one-eleven Salem. We moved to this neighborhood because it was a nice, quiet neighborhood. And I live one house away from the high school. And we already get enough light pollution and noise pollution, which we expected when we moved there. And we have Wegmans in the Culver Ridge parking lot. And my favorite time of the day is to go out at eleven o'clock at night when I can actually see some stars maybe. And maybe it's a little quiet and people's alarms are not going off on their car or whatever else. And my kids grew up here. That was the main reason we moved there. We have neighbors next door to us and across the street that have probably lived there about thirty years plus. And as Sandy has said and other people, electric is the way of the future. We already had a smart car. We have, we own a Tesla. We have the new satellite dish from, that Tesla's putting out. We have solar panels on our camper. And we don't have them on our house yet because that's going to be a, a big price. And with all the traffic that already comes through there. Me, my husband and a lot of us walk the neighborhood with our animals. I don't have kids anymore because they're all grown up. But there are new people moving into the neighborhood with little kids. And me and my daughter used to actually play tennis out in, out in the road. And now there's a lot of people cutting through because we have Abington, which loops Worthington, Attleboro to Abington. And a lot of people already cut through there. And like she said over there, there are going to be a bunch of cars lined up at Culver or at, to turn off the Worthington on to Culver. Because there is no right on red, even though people do it illegally all the time. You also have two U-turns. One's legal and one isn't legal, like right, right near Walgreens. And I can tell you every day that I go out, at least twice a week, somebody's making a legal turn there. And there's never anybody that pulls, and there's no police ever there that pulls anybody over. I love this neighborhood and I'm also an avid gardener for thirty-something years. If anybody's ever seen my garden, still know how much I love the land and, or the earth. And Adirondacks are my favorite place in the world. And if you've, I know most people haven't seen my backyard, but it's like, it's like a fortress. And all these shrubs that he's going to put out there, I can tell you probably lots of them will die, like somebody else said. Because the salt isn't going to take it. And then you're going to have all these sore eyes trees that are just going to be sitting there, like all the other gas stations. That don't cut them down and redo them. You got all these convenience stores nearby. You already got another, you already got the other gas station at the, the other corner. The southwest corner. And I'm just here to say my part. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin Winters, sixty-three Ridgewood Drive. I was also asked to speak on behalf of my neighbor at forty-seven Ridgewood Drive, Bev Bloss. She sent an email yesterday to the planning board and she wanted to make sure everybody received that. Her daughter is blind and she lives just a few houses down on Ridgewood Drive. Her daughter trains seeing eye dogs and she's very concerned about the traffic that's going to be coming down that street. Right now, she's able to cross the street right in front of her house to work with these dogs. So she just wanted to make sure her concerns were heard. I am definitely opposed to the curb cut under Ridgewood Drive, like everyone else has spoke. The traffic is going to be unbelievable coming down that street. And we all that live in that neighborhood know you can't get off the street now. Definitely turning left and right is going to be an issue for any delivery vehicles who want to get to one-oh-four. Because they're not going to be able to turn right there and turn left on the Culver. Because they won't be able to get over to the signal light because the traffic will be backed up. So they're going to go down Ridge Road, further down Ridge Road to get on one-oh-four if that where they, they need to. Heard a lot of discussion about the arborvitae's for sound. I heard no discussion about maybe some brick or stone walls, which, may I present these to somebody?
Sure. To the, over there, they'll come around.
One of those pictures is the East Avenue Wegmans. They have a nice brick retaining wall where their delivery trucks will back into so they're not visible. And I'm sure it helps with all the noise. And there's another picture there of a nice brick retaining wall. Those would help with the noise versus the arborvitae's. Again, coming down Ridgewood is going to be a big issue. When this property went up for sale, it was promoted as being a high-traffic count area. There's fifteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-two vehicles per day on East Ridge Road. There's seventeen thousand one hundred and eight vehicles per day on Culver Road. How many of those are going to come over to the gas station and then want to come down our road to get home? I had a plumber at my house a few weeks ago. He lives in the Somerville area. He came to my house. He says, oh, I never knew this was Ridgewood Drive. He says, I come through here all the time to avoid Culver Ridge traffic lights. And he didn't even know the name of the road. He just knew he came there because it was easier to cut through than to go out to the lights. So we're going to just have more and more of that. The curb cut, there should be no curb cut because everybody's going to turn right. Take the entrance at the plaza, move it down a little bit, move with the traffic light and just make the entrance there. Nothing on Ridgewood Drive, just Ridge Road. The gas station, we just do not need any more gas stations. I have to, some of you will remember back, Arundicoid, when it came from one-oh-four onto five-ninety, there was a sign, welcome to Arundicoid. Many years ago, underneath that sign, it said, home of the Arundicoid Mall. And we all know how that went. Now it's going to be welcome to the home of gas stations, convenience stores and fast food. Because that seems to be all we're getting in Arundicoid. If any of you follow people on blogs, they're, they're never complaining about having something good come to town. It's always these types of things. They're always asking, where are the nice fine dining? Why can't we get any of those? Why do we only get fast food, gas stations and convenience stores? So I really think Arundicoid needs to consider whether we really need more gas stations with everything going electric, like many have spoke. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So the, so before you come up, we normally don't allow second time up. However, well, my question is, if it has something to do with the site plan? If it does not, I gotta ask you, we don't normally allow you to come back up a second.
I just want to know how come I'm not being informed about these meetings? Someone else in my neighborhood sent an email with a picture of a postcard they got. But I live closest to where the gas pumps are going to be and I've got no, don't, because of my neighbors is the only reason I knew there was a meeting. That's all I want to say.
Okay, thank you. Okay, please state, state your name again and your address.
Sandy Oram at twenty Salem Road. People have been talking about no curb cut. But the only thing that worries me is that people will still use Ridgewood to come up. I mean, it'll still be used, will have more traffic.
You need to speak into the microphone? I'm sorry.
Okay, if you have exits off of East Ridge Road and don't have a curb cut, people will still use Ridgewood as a shortcut to Culver. Because you, you know, I mean, they'll find out and use that. So it would be best if you turned Ridgewood into a one-way up to, so they can't turn right onto Ridgewood. And it would be really hard for us as residents because it's really hard to take a left onto East Ridge Road. But it would prevent people from turning right onto Ridgewood and all that traffic. So this is, it's just, it's kind of just a mess. So, yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to address the board? This first or second? I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Christine Winter, twenty-six Salem Road. I really just want to implore the board to reconsider. Just want to add the notes that I said that I'm against this. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to address the board? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Oh, sorry. Is that true? Well, the applicant can do that after the public hearing.
Can we leave the hearing?
I'm going to suggest that we maybe leave this hearing open in case we don't do it.
We don't normally do it that way though.
I'm asking that the board consider that. I, we don't do lots of things normally.
Well, we, we do, we do leave the public hearings open routinely when we believe that there may be additional.
Oh, if that's why you're asking, I'm sorry. I thought, I'm sorry. I thought it was just the process as you were questioning.
That would be my purview at the moment at least, until we see what board discussion is on this and so on. Would be my suggestion that we leave it open until
I, I don't have a problem leaving it open at the moment. You can come up and address the, the comments.
Yes, I'm confused. We're keeping the public hearing open until after my comments?
No, it's, it, we're keeping the public hearing open because in, in my opinion, we don't have a final set of plans here that we're ruling on yet. So, you know, we don't have a final drawing at the moment.
Okay. Just, okay, just wanted clarification. That's all.
We have one sheet of paper, right? And that's it. No other design details or anything yet. So this is not a full
We don't have the lighting plan and everything else.
Full landscaping plan, et cetera.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'll adjust just a few of the, the concerns we've heard about in regards to arborvitae's and the salts. One of the reasons they're, were placed on a three-foot berm and significantly away from the parking area. I think the salt would not affect them being three feet, you know, a plant on top of them. Rodents on dumpsters. We have a company, Ehrlich, which is a professional pest control company. They do all of our burn dairies across the state. They come one time per month on a scheduled maintenance thing that is not as needed. Again, that's, that's Ehrlich who does that. They're professional. Music at the pumps was mentioned. There is no music or ads at the pumps. Lighting, I said I'm getting a lighting. I think I can address that. Zero foot candles at property lines is zero foot candles, meaning there is no lighting spell. All my lighting is dark sky friendly. And that's not a requirement per the town. Some towns do have that. So I'm going above and beyond giving dark sky friendly compliant. Some in the spellings do have that as a requirement, but your zoning does not. In regards to environmental, we meet or exceed all New York State DEC and EPA guidelines. The issue with air quality, I had made the statement before that there is no air quality permit required for fueling stations. Okay, that, that's idling cars and whatnot, but there is no, no requirement for air quality. But again, we do meet any regulations with the New York State DEC in regards to underground storage facilities, testing requirements and EPA, and we do get a license from them.
And can I just ask a point of clarity on that?
Yes.
Just to make sure I understand that correct. I think what you said, and I, I just want to make this point because I think it's important, is that motor vehicle fueling stations do not require a DEC air permit.
That's correct, yes.
Which is a thing that say a chemical plant or other things that have known pollutants in the air. So this, this has been deemed by DEC that it is
There's certain things, you are correct. There's certain things, you are correct. There's thresholds that certain things, certain uses are required for an air permit. You are correct.
And this does not require.
This does not require them.
Okay, thank, thank you for clarifying that.
Yep. Uh, curb cut on Ridgewood, it was mentioned it's across from our residence. That is, uh, not true as I showed on the site plan here. It is directly lined up with the Walgreens, which is a commercial use. It's lined up exactly. That's why the location is there. Uh, so that is there. Uh, this project, it was mentioned it has variances. This, this one here, since we've changed it, the old one had an area variance with a side yard setback. This site plan as presented tonight has no area variances. It meets all town of Arondequite zoning regulations as currently writ, written. Uh, that's important. Uh, property values, I'm not, I turned that stuff into the town board. This board also has copies of it. You saw my studies which were done. Uh, and that's it.
Um, somebody asked about where you're going to lower the grade.
Uh, grade will stay the same, uh, relatively the same. That's all dictated on elevations of Ridgewood and East Ridge. Roads surrounding the properties always dictate elevation of the sites. Uh, you know, from the driveway design, you know, ideally it's a two to three percent slope. Uh, so the grading would stay very, very similar to what it is now.
Uh, you said that there would be no ads at the gas pumps. Um, I wanted to ask about that. I did, um, get gas at a burn dairy. I don't know where it was. I believe it was in like Chi-Li-ish. And, uh, when I got gas, there were small television screens in the pumps and they played ads. Um, would that be here or no?
That, that is not true. Uh, I'm a thousand percent positive. I've designed fifty some of these. I'm the one that buys the fuel dispensers. There is no advertising at any one.
There's no, um, audio advertisement?
There is no audio advertisements.
Okay, maybe I'm mistaken.
Yes. I'm po, I'm positive of that. We don't have the capabilities to do that in, in with our, with our cash registers. I get the monochrome ten-inch screen so you can read it better, but I do not have any sort of advertisement at those. Many of our competitors do have them. Actually, it's very common in our industry, but we do not have them.
Do you play music at the pumps?
We do not play music at the pumps. Again, I have no capabilities. Fifteen years ago, we did muzak, it's called, but I did away with that at all stations. Again, we do not have music.
Um, then the, uh, you did, uh, give us information about the values of homes that were in proximity. And if I remember correctly, um, you said something to the effect of the value of the home that was adjacent to the comparable gas station increased at the same rate as the other houses in the neighborhood.
That's correct.
Um, do you know if the value of the home, um, that was adjacent to the gas station was comparable to, uh, another like-house in the neighborhood?
I, I do not know that.
I have no doubt that the value of the property increased and I'm, it stands to reason that it would increase at a similar amount as the rest of the homes in the neighborhood. What I don't know or what I wonder is if the value of that house that was immediately adjacent to the ga, gas station would, is comparable to the value of a house like it that is also in the neighborhood. I'm sure they all, uh, grew at the same rate.
Okay, and I did provide a, a document from C, CNY appraisers or professional appraiser that identified in there, I think one of the statements was that, uh, in their professional opinion, it doesn't affect the property values. That's not my opinion. That's, you know, what, what was written by them.
I have a couple of comments. First one is you, I appreciate your willingness to use a pest solution company. Uh, I'm going to condition the approval on the fact that they use a contain and kill system. So that rodents aren't eating poison and heading out into the neighborhood because it's shown.
We do use a containing.
Okay.
Because it's a box.
That rodents that get back out of that box and are eaten by pests and it can harm the people.
That is what we use.
The second thing is I'm going to contradict your statement about this curb cut not being across from a driveway. Goes back to Spencer's comment on your thirty-foot wide curb cut. Uh, if you look at the curbing that you have drawn here, it almost cuts to the middle of that person's yard and their driveway is on the southerly border.
Okay.
So your curb cut is in fact directly across the street from Walgreens and that person's driveway.
Um, so could you talk a little bit about the cadence of your maintenance of your fences in your property?
Uh, maintenance, we have our own maintenance crew fence. If there's an issue with our fence, it's a cedar fence as well. Uh, that's why we choose cedar and not a regular standard wood. Cedar, as you guys know, uh, does very little maintenance on a cedar fence. Uh, but again, we're company-owned and we have our own, we have five maintenance guys that go around. Uh, the stores do checklist, weekly, monthly. Uh, district managers visit the site. Uh, we do spring cleanups, fall cleanups. Uh, landscapers would, they're hired on a weekly basis to come around and keep our grounds up. We do not do that in-house. So we'll probably get a local landscape company that comes in and does all the upkeep on that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Yeah, can somebody address for me on the southbound traffic on Ridgewood? What is the queuing amount before you hit either the Walgreens or your, um, driveway?
The distance?
I want to know how many cars you can queue in that space. Is it five cars? Is it ten cars?
I'm sorry, excuse me, audience members. The question's to the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we know how many feet it is?
Please.
I can get a scale and tell you next time since the, I would say it's approximately, uh, probably four cars, I'm guessing?
Please.
But you'll give me that information and that will be helpful to me.
Um, could I understand, Mr. Richards, what were you looking at?
I'm asking how many cars are queuing southbound on Ridgewood before you hit a place where you're going to cause a traffic jam such as the traffic jam we would have at Dunkin' Donut?
Okay. I would go back to my traffic study that was done by a professional. He looked at queuing and he.
Can you tell me where that is though? Cause I've been trying to find it.
I've submitted it to the board on.
No, what page?
Of the queue, I'd have to go through and look.
Okay, that would be helpful. Cause I just can't find it and it could be that.
Okay.
I just am incapable of, uh, understanding it. So that would be helpful. The other question I have is a staff question. Do we have the town engineer's comments on this project?
Oh, I thought I saw them from Mary. Forgive me, I, we did send the revised, uh, site plan for, and for the engineer to review. I'll double-check to see. I don't know if we got comments we may not have because of the shorter distance between our meetings than usual.
Okay.
Can you, um, on the, on the letter that you submitted regarding, uh, the noise, uh, study? Can, can you explain to us who, who completed the study?
Yes, that is a represent, that is a representative of the Cooler and Freezer Company, uh, Bailey, and they put all of our systems in. And they're the equipment manufacturer, they're the equipment manufacturer rep.
That's who Link Hospitality Solutions.
Yeah, it was not me who did this study. I thought about it. I said I could go buy a decibel meter, but again, I'm taking the me out of the equation. And that's who, when you call somebody to do that study, they went out there, as you can see, they certified it. It wasn't me standing next to them. That's why I had them do it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Just to reiterate with staff that the town board, um, will come to some conclusion at some point regarding the special use permit, which would include the hours of the operation for the gas pumps, correct?
Yeah, so it's the, yeah, it's the town board's purview to review the special use permit for the gas pump portion of the proposed development site.
So if everybody's made their comments, I got, I guess I got some concerns.
I do want to tell the applicant that I do appreciate them listening at least to a lot of what the neighbors said. I know that you're not, they're not a hundred percent satisfied, but you did a lot of mitigation from when we started three months ago to today.
Well, thank you.
So, I appreciate that. Sorry, Bernie.
I think you even heard at least one positive comment to that tonight. So, um, I'm concerned though that, um, we don't have the town engineer's comments. We don't have the lighting plan, which we've never approved without a lighting plan that I know of.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, and a landscaping plan. I think you do have quite a bit of landscaping on here, but somebody mentioned you wanted a formal landscaping plan with a maintenance.
Yeah, I mean, again, that's another thing we always have is a formal plan with counts and quantities and.
Yep, that's, that's not a problem. It does, the, the requirement is not from a landscape architect though.
It does not have to be from a landscape, landscape architect.
I can get your landscape plan. That's, that's typical for me as well. Again, this was, again, this was a final, but yes, I can.
Yeah, just for the town, you said something about Kerry, we can request some type of guarantee on the plants or?
So typically with the, a note can be added to the landscape plan that specifies a certain number, a timeframe that the plant materials are going to be mon, you know, guaranteed. And then that's fairly standard. We've seen in, in, in many of the, uh, the plans submitted. However, beyond that, if, um, you know, uh, portions of the landscape, especially those that were deemed, you know, critical to the, to the site plan review and approval, if they were to fail or to, you know, not be there any longer, to be removed, the town can then, um, uh, sort of compel the, uh, the owner of the property to conform with the approved site plan. Or seek, um, revised site plan if they have an alternate idea of what they want to do. But they have to either keep what they have and what they got approved for. If they want to make a significant alteration based on, you know, plant life, they could come back to the board for that.
And I, just one other comment. You mentioned something about the arborvitae. I think the person that was talking was talking about the ones that would be near the dumpster, near the parking lot that would get the salt. That was my understanding.
There are none by the parking lot.
No, we, you talked about putting arborvitae's on the side of the dumpster.
Yeah, they're, they're, that's, they're not going to wrap all the way towards the parking lot.
They're not going to be, okay, that's what I thought they might, because they talked about the rodents at the same time. Okay. Um, but based on that, I mean,
So, so I think.
Are you in favor of, you know, tabling this and coming back with that information?
I, I'll, I'll bring it back.
I, I do think while the applicant is here and, and while the public are here, personally, I think we do need to have some discussion on the curb cut onto Ridge Wood, um, at, at least in, in regards to width and radii, uh, exiting out onto Ridgewood. I, I don't like it the way it is.
I'm going to agree with you, Mr. Reed, about the items you mentioned. I also, it's a big, it's, it's a big deal, this curb cut onto Ridge Road. So as far as I'm concerned, we have to be absolutely convinced that it is completely and totally necessary to the project to have a curb cut on Ridge Road or Ridge, Ridge Wood. Uh, because there is substantial concern from the neighbors and I think that it's reasonable concern. Um, and that there is no alternative to having the curb cut onto Ridge Ro, uh, to having an additional curb cut onto Ridge Road. I know, uh, the rationale for having the curb cut onto Ridge Road as it is now is because it aligns with the gap in the median. Uh, but is it not possible, and I, I'm, I'm sure that you need to, um, is it, is it not possible to leave one where it is and put an additional one that does not align with the median? Or, um, uh, reallocate the curb cuts? I, and I asked this, I know that it's, is a hindrance, um, not having a, a gap in the median because the traffic's coming from the other way, can't necessarily get in without making a U-turn. But I do know that there are other places in the county who have similar conditions, namely, um, Ridge Road and Grease where there are businesses that you cannot access from, uh, the other side of the median, um, without coming back around the other side. So I know it's, it, it, it is a possibility.
Before you answer, Brad, I want to give you my support on that question. Um, the number one thing I heard, and this isn't going to cover everyone in the audience tonight. Uh, a lot of them don't particularly want a gas station there, but that, that's, that's a different story and that's a, that's a decision for the town board and not one that we can make. The other thing I heard from pretty much everyone that came up here is they are very, very worried about traffic in their neighborhood. And I'm sure doing your due diligence and driving down that street, you know how tight that street is. There also aren't any sidewalks on it. So, uh, Brad, I, I, I want to give you my support. I need to be convinced that you, not only that that curb cut needs to be as large as it is, but that you need one at all. Or in between those, that you need one that has a right turn. No right turn would, would change this a little bit for me, but you, you, I need more convincing and not, and not the DOT says it's okay. I understand the DOT doesn't have a concern with it. But these folks do, as do I, and I need your business cause for wanting that curb cut.
Excuse me, Mr. Evelyn. I apologize. I just want to clarify a statement you just made for the, for the residents here. The town board does not control whether or not this project can be here. The zoning code.
That's, that, that, I meant the gas station.
Yeah, but they can't, it's a special use. It's a permitted use. It requires a special use permit. That still means it's a permitted use.
The gas pumps?
Yes.
Okay, so.
And the special use allows them to impose reasonable conditions.
Okay.
And if the proposed special use was so far different than anything in the area, in other words, they were proposing other special use permits in that area could be a major manufacturing facility. If it was so far afield, that might be something that they could turn down, but the special use permits issued for a gas station, um, with or without convenience, there's no, there, there are many of them on, there are several of them on East Ridge Road, and so there's, it's a permitted use.
Perfect, perfect.
I'd, I'd also just like to clarify, there are sidewalks on the east side of Ridgewood. I just want to, I, just for the record.
That's perfectly fine.
Yep.
Yeah, I would, I don't, I know that the, uh, comments over the last two times, and you've been here too, that we've had the public offer us up comments. Ridgewood has been a, a, uh, point that they have brought up over and over again. I've taken the notes, everybody who talks to me, your name and all your concerns are written down. Um, if we could do something to mitigate, I think we've, we've done a lot of mitigation here and I know that people don't appreciate it, but it, it really.
A long way. We've, we've absolutely come a long way.
But if we could take another look when we meet next time, just to have a better understanding of that and maybe we can come up with a way to do it or the town can come up with a better way to do it. I don't think it's, I think that it, you've made it really inviting to have a thirty-foot wide. That's a lot more, it's going to be a lot prettier than that entrance and exit off of Ridge Road, unfortunately for everybody. Um, but.
And it's, it's, just from my point of view, from a, a technical point of view, it's the thirty-foot plus it's the radii.
Okay.
I have a big problem with the radii and the width.
Just be, when I tell my engineer, he designs things per New York State DOT and county spec, so.
Sure, but we don't, but we don't need.
Cause it's a town road and I understand and I'm going to go back and have this conversation with him.
Understood, but we also don't need that radii heading north because we don't have tractor trailers and such turning north. So there's the option to do a different radii.
Duly noted, you will see a change, I can assure you. But again, I'll blame it on my engineer. He's doing what he would do to get a permit from a normal, sure, county agency and state agency. Cause they tell you what the, as you know, they dictate the radius. We don't make it up. Uh, that's why I left the existing on Ridgeway the way it was because that was already approved. Why would I reinvent the wheel? But no, duly noted. So, uh, that will be addressed, I can assure you.
Let me get some clarification from the board. So I'm hearing a couple of different things. One, I heard what you said, um, Mr. Reed, that you wanted it looked at as far as the size. But now second, I've heard because of the neighbor concerns, you're looking for, is there an alternative? Is that what I heard? I just want to make sure I heard it correctly. So you're looking for both. Um, I mean, we're talking one's the size and the other one's an alternative, so I'm trying to get some clarity to the applicant.
Unless there's something that I haven't heard yet, I don't, or the county DOT is going to disagree with me. I, I don't see the necessity of the Ridge Wood curb cut. Um, it, I'm just, I'm not convinced based on the neighbor concerns and then just the overall necessity. If they, if there is other highly compelling evidence that I have yet to hear, then my next, um, my next would be, it certainly cannot. then my next, uh, my next would be, it certainly cannot be this wide. I don't think we can have a right-hand turn out of it. And can we, I, we haven't talked about this yet, but can it be skewed that the entrance, uh, skews towards, um, Ridge Road? So it's difficult, but not impossible, to make a right-hand turn out of it.
Yeah, I think that's kinda where I was going with maybe different radii as well. You know, I mean, I think that's...
And also, that's what I'm asking about the queue, queuing of vehicles along that route. I mean, at some point, we're gonna reach a point that it's gonna clog.
Okay, so I just wanted clarity for the applicant, what was being said, just so you, do you have clarity? Are you good, you're hearing it?
As clear as I can be, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, cause we talked about a few different things. Anything else to be discussed? Alright, so we have your permission, uh, you're, you would like to request to table this and come back?
I think the board requested, I'm not, I'm not gonna request that.
I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, you can't, you can't speak. Sorry, ma'am. Out of turn. Do you agree to table, I guess? I'll ask the lawyer, which way do we gotta do this?
I don't think he needs to agree.
I've never had to agree, yeah. It's your decision.
Okay. Normally the applicant agrees to come in.
Oh, really? I, I've just never had to do that in all my years of, I've never been asked, so...
The application itself is incomplete.
I was gonna say, that, that's the distinction here. So if we had all the materials that made a complete application to the planning board and, um, but in this instance, there are some items missing that render it a, a not-quite-complete application. So the timetable that normally applies doesn't apply now.
Okay, and please make sure this gets numbered and added to it, too, for the...
Okay.
Do you want a motion, Mr. Chair?
I would like a motion, please.
On two zero two one zero eight dash four, this board adjourned this case until next month for lack of a complete application.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstaining? No addenda?
Mr. Chair, would you entertain a motion to adjourn?
Do we have any minutes? If we don't have any minutes, I would gladly entertain...
I did not see any.
I didn't, I don't recall any, so... Okay.
I would like to put forth a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.
We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the Yarandacoit Planning Board on ICAT Government Access.